You didn't think so?
Oh, you did. You got it in the garbage can. Yeah.
In the swamp.
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm good.
The good old Assessor's office. Look at that. All three of them, they're sitting there, nice and purty. Yeah, I know, we've got three, three open.
Well, you and Michael Rose.
Oh, yeah.
Morning of the day.
Will this be the fastest meeting in the history of...
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. At this time, we will take up our pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led this morning by Supervisor Shucklian.
Thank you. Please join me in saluting our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, we will now take up Board of Supervisors matters, and I will look to the Supervisor who's always prepared, Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we had a conference call with the Executive Committee concerning the in-home supportive services, MOE, with the state of California, and I have to tell you, I do think the CSAC staff worked very, very hard to make improvements upon the situation. The state is putting in some serious dollars for these first couple of years to reduce, and I don't know what our, if we've calculated what our counties' reports know it will be. But initially, what had happened was, the Governor's Office had administrative authority to basically just change everything, and it meant $600 million back to the counties. It was a very big number, and now it's been reduced. But there is a concern about outlying years, that this is not going to be sustainable. So, it's good news. I think the goal is that there'll be a new governor in town, and maybe, maybe something could be different, where the program's going to have to be throttled back or something, because it's just not going to be sustainable. And this is one of those areas where oftentimes, unintended consequences of minimum wage law changes are, have a huge impact, because generally speaking, these folks are paid at a minimum wage, and when you go from nine, $10 an hour to 15, that's a huge, huge increase to government to pay, pick up that cost. So, just wanted to let you know about that. We will be going, three of the members will be going to the CSAC Legislative Conference later on today, and I will be attending the Board of Director meeting on Thursday. Always a big part of that is an update from the Governor's Office about the May revise, so I always, it's really good to have some of the key people there from his office speak to us and be available for questions. While, also while I'm there, the State Water Commission will be meeting, and I will make an effort to be there before the meeting to speak to some of the members. As you know, they are the folks who are responsible for the allocation of the water bond funds, of which we're hoping to gain sizable dollars for the construction of Temperance Flat, so whenever we have an opportunity to present ourselves there, we try to do that. Also, our Executive Director will be there, I'm going to try to join him as we meet with a potential PR firm to help represent us, to present the Temperance Flat project to the Governor's Office in Sacramento. That's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Shucklian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a busy week. Last week, in these chambers, I was able to attend the promotion ceremonies for the Sheriff's Department, when I promoted two Assistant Sheriffs and two Captains. So, that was a nice, well-attended ceremony. On Thursday, I had Animal Services Advisory Committee meeting and the Parks Advisory Committee meeting, and so those were very well-attended, and a lot was, very pertinent information was discussed. That evening, I attended the unveiling of the centennial mural at the Farm Bureau. If you have not seen it, on Ben Maddox, the Farm Bureau, it's facing Ben Maddox. It's a, it's a beautiful mural, and it's very representative of agriculture in Tulare County, so I encourage folks to go by and check that out. Wednesday morning, along with some staff, I attended the United Ways Power of the Purse, and the models this year were much better than last year, I'd have to say.
Thanks.
No, we missed you.
Appreciate it.
We missed you swinging the purse and doing a little dance on the runway.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was a very well-attended event. From there, was the Senior Day at the park, and then on Friday night, I had the pleasure of emceeing the CASA event, which some of our staff was also there, and it was a very well-attended event, and it raised, I hope, a lot of money for CASA, a very good organization. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending the Kings Tulare Agency, Kings Tulare Area Agency on Aging. That's a mouthful.
Good job.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you to...
You should know the name of the committee you sit on.
Well, I know the name, but they're, you know, KT AAA, so nobody knows what that is.
Okay, there you go.
So, thank you to Juliette for driving me down to Early Mart, and that was a nice little drive, and then, the highlight of my day, sorry, was my ride back with Supervisor Crocker, as we drove through Ducor, Tellarabella, Porterville, Strathmore. I got to see where, you know, he went to high school, and then, from there, we went on to, last year, we went on to the TCAG meeting in Dinuba, drove home through Soltana, Cutler, Orocy, so it was a whirlwind tour of Tulare County yesterday.
Did you miss Allen's Worth?
We didn't make it to Allen's Worth, but I'm sure Supervisor Chairman, Chairman Vanderpool will have one of our meetings there.
Yeah, sure.
And I'm very excited, this afternoon, I will be attending a pro-youth Shelter Buddies Program at the Visalia Animal Care Center. It's a program where they have the kids reading to the animals there, so that'll be a fun one. I guess that's enough.
That is enough.
Yeah.
Supervisor Crocker. Well, that was, you have Supervisor Shucklian and Wanda Ashida in the car. Boy, oh, boy. What a trip.
It'll let her car, it's a quiet car.
It's a quiet car.
You know, this is, I'll be attending the CSAC Ledge Conference, as well as some of the other Board members. Strathmore Middle School has a Career Day Friday, and Happy Trails has their annual dinner this Friday evening that I will be attending. I will also be, I scheduled a vacation last year, so I will be missing next week's Board meeting. I'll be visiting Nashville, so, no pictures, so there we go. And I just want to thank the HRD Department for giving me a baby croc. With my meeting with them last, last week, you know, you can, Rhonda never fails. She never fails, and I'm sure Sam's...
I know she can't have a pet cat in the office.
Yeah, she's working yet.
Himalayan salt rocks for everyone, I think, is the other thing, so, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. All right. Supervisor Michael T. Innis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, you might look up Willie Nelson back there, and thank him for on the road again, that song that you're...
That's right.
Says what you do all the time. Well, we found, we had a TCAG meeting yesterday, Tulare County Association of Governments, we found out that the contract is going to be awarded for Highway 65 from Porterville to Karen's Corner. So, that's a much-needed resurfacing that we've had complaints on ever since it was, you know, put down, and I told the people, I said, "When, when they ground it down like that, and you saw them put all those reflectors in place, it wasn't going away for a while", and it didn't, so I think it's been almost three years. So, that's a much-needed overlay that we're looking forward to. Highway 65 is under construction from Highway 190 to Teapot Dome. That's well into, that should be done, maybe in the next, I would say, mid-year or later part of next year. Much-needed, another four lanes of highway. It's called the Tellarabella Expressway, but it's not even close to Tellarabella, but it'd be nice if we could get all the way to Tellarabella sometime, or even, because we've got the passing lane at Ducor, but it would be nice.
Make going to Early Mart quicker.
Yeah, that's right.
That's important.
I want to thank RMA, and of course Johnny Wong. We had some complaints on Poplar with the shoulders through town and the post office. I'll have to admit, it was my wife.
No.
But anyway, the crew was out there yesterday, and my wife is very happy, since when she goes to the post office now, she doesn't tear her car up, so that's very good. Success Lake, Success Lake is at 73,000 acre feet. Now, when you think 73,000 acre feet, the lake only holds 82.5, and we're still trying to get the sandbags put in the spillway so we can take it up over 100. But the Corps of Engineers has to make that decision, and for some reason, they just can't seem to make up their minds. So, I think that Lower Thule is pretty interested, because they would like that water that they can get behind there, another 10,000 to 15,000 acre feet of water is pretty valuable going into the summer. Of course, we've got plenty of Friant water this year, and we'll continue to use that Friant water, so we can keep that lake pretty well-filled up through summer. They're only releasing 250 second feet right now, they were releasing 500, so hopefully, we'll be able to get that spillway sandbag like we have asked, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. First of all, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank either the former Visalia City Councilwoman, or current Visalia City Councilman, who decided they would send their love to the county by running their above-ground sewage line right by our office.
Out my window.
I think that's really great.
Current one, go with the current city council member.
Go with current, okay. That's a nice way to say hi to Tulare County.
Miss you.
Yeah. Couple of things I wanted to go over real quick. This Friday, at 11:30 at the Edison Ag Tech Center in the city of Tulare, will be the State of the County Presentation, State of the City Presentation, given by myself, the Mayor of Tulare, as well, we will have presentations from Assemblyman Devin Mathis, as well as State Senator Gene Fuller, so that'll, should be a well-attended event, and it's always nice to hear what various jurisdictions' perceptions of the state of their organization is. I know the county's in great shape, so, and that's all I care about. I'm kidding. Also, on Saturday, is the Fallen Peace Officer Memorial Fundraising Basketball Tournament. That is going to be held Saturday night at El Diamante High School. That's a great event. You ever want to see the sheriff in shorts, out there, running around, acting like an athlete, it's a great time to go see that happen, so, sure appreciate everybody who's volunteering to participate in that event, and help raise money for the Fallen Peace Officers, who we've all honored this month. So, that's all that I have. We will now move on on our agenda, and take up item number two, which is a presentation given by the Community Services, Employment, and Training CSAT regarding their Tech Connect Program.
We're Supervisors. Great seeing you again.
Yeah, nice to see you too.
We have our 2016, 2017 Tech Connect from Cutler, Orocy. These are the youth that are going to complete the program for this year, which is going to do a quick presentation. We're capable of...
I don't know if you know this Supervisor Shucklian, but we actually drove by the CSAT office on our tour yesterday.
We didn't point that out.
I know, that's because you guys are tired.
I was too busy looking at the Strathmore waste treatment plant.
Probably won't.
Okay, we got a quick presentation. This is the Tech Connect Program that we have every year, it's an after-school program. We do our class sessions there at the Step Up. We're partnered with the Cutler, Orocy Joint Unified School District, they're a big help, and this is what we had this year. We actually have our program objectives, where we have 30 youth from Orocy High School that participate in the program, and they, it's a nine-month course. They provide, we provide the tools, so they can be more engaged in their communities, in their schools, and in their futures. You know, post-secondary is very important, especially in this area, there's, you know, a lot of gang activity, low-income families, and farm labor, so it's a little difficult for them to continue post-secondary due to the fact that some of these youth have to work to put food on the table. So, we guide them to the, to, for post-secondary, and we also acquire their readiness skills, so we, we get them prepared for, for jobs out there. So, these are the 27 that we currently have right now. We try to split half and half, you know, with gender, so we, in October, we had Make a Difference Day. It's a Make a Difference Day project, where our youth actually got Halloween baskets, and they made planters for the senior citizens there in the Cutler area. So, they, they took a day of their time, and they actually drilled holes, put the pots together and everything, and then they watered it, and the senior citizens were very happy to receive these gifts. These, in our curriculum, we have our digital literacy, career exploration, understanding stereotypes, self-perception. We do a lot of computer repairs, because in this area, families cannot afford to go to Best Buy and for $200 just to take a look at the computer, so what the students will walk them through it, and walk through the sessions of computer refurbishing, and they actually fix the computers for free for their communities. And if we get old computers, we refurbish them ourselves, and they get to keep them. A lot of the households don't have computers, so they, they will definitely need those for post-secondary, so we try to accommodate them. We also show them the principles of effective leaderships, the importance of community services, the workforce development, and diversity training. We also were part of the VITAL program, the Voluntary Income Tax Assistance. All 30 youth were IRS tax-certified. They passed the IRS test. You only get two chances, and you must have an 80% or better. Every single one passed on the first try. So, you know, and, and the, that was very interesting. So, this year, what they did, they brought back $281,459 to the Cutler, Orocy area. They prepared 261 taxes.
That's it. I'll bring mine next year.
We prepared them for the world of work, where we helped them with their communication skills, we complete resume references, we show them the work ethics, how-to interview, dressing to success, and they choose a career and try to research that career. So, we get them ready for, for the, for the world of work out there. I track their GPAs, we also track their GPAs. I track, I track them every quarter, well, every semester, but I like tracking them every quarter, because we also have tutoring twice a week if they need help with any, any class, any subject during their high school regular hours. We have tutoring classes offered there at the Step Up after school and after the Tech Connect Program. We're also parent involvement, we, we encourage second, post-secondary education. There's parenting wisely available, because in the area, there are a lot of gang members, and sometimes, you know, the parents and the, the youth, they don't see eye to eye, so they can come in and, you know, we'll talk to both of them, and see if we can work something out within, within them too. We also do basic computer class sessions, where the Tech Connects actually teach adults their parents, grandparents, how to use a computer. You know, a lot of the times, the senior citizens, you say, "This is the mouse." They look on the floor, you know, they're actually looking for a mouse. So, it's like, no, this is the mouse, this is how you use it. So, they actually do a one-on-one, and teach them the basic computer, and they actually show them how to create an email account. Some of the challenges are family issues, needing to work, like I said, to bring food on the table. A lot of them do play sports and have other activities, but we're flexible with the program. They can play sports and also be part of the Tech Connect Program. There's an increase of gang activity, functional class session facility, and this year was a little different. We have the ELS students, the English Second Language, so when we did the trainings, we had to do them both English and Spanish, so that was a bit of a challenge, but we got through it. Program activities that we have in the program during the year, we do the VR project, where we get cardboard, you know, a lot of the kids in this area, they can't afford virtual reality, so we got some from the cardboard, how, how 3D, how they can download the apps, how, how to create an app, we can do all that research, so we, we have a little project for virtual reality. Computer repairs and hardware fundamentals, you can see them here, taking computers apart, putting them together, getting the hardware. You can order hardware for like $10 online, where in the store's $150, and we put them in ourselves, so. We had the opportunity to go to CSU Monterey Bay, we visited the campus. 90% of these youth have never been to the beach or ocean, and as you can see there, they were on the, it was a very cold day, they had their shoes off, playing on the sand, they've never touched the sand before, so, you know, that was, that was pretty awesome to see. We do financial aid activities, where we do a session on how to apply for grants, financial aid. Fifty, I want to say 60% are juniors, the rest are seniors. All the seniors have been enrolled and are ready to go to post-secondary education, so we have 100% that will be going to college this year from this program. We also went to UC Berkeley, and as you can see, Nayeli Salcedo on the bottom, and Letizia Robles, they were in the Tech Connect Program. Nayeli is a senior now, and this is her fourth year at UC Berkeley, and Letizia is a sophomore, and they're, and they're both pre-law majors, and the reason they chose UC Berkeley was due to the fact that we went to field trips similar to this, and this influenced them, so they applied, they got in, and they're about to graduate, Nayeli's about to graduate, yeah. It's pretty awesome. And these are the basic computer classes, which we spoke about, class sessions, community engagement, in Christmas, they had a food drive, where they put food baskets together, and gave them to the families that are less fortunate, didn't have much food to eat for Christmas, so they put them together, they donated canned foods, and they boxed everything We had our STEAM event, the second STEAM event there at the Energy Education Center. It was a great event for them, it's, they set up booths for different careers, if there's a career that they have in mind, they can go ask questions, get flyers, kind of like a job fair, and STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. So, it's a great event all around. They got the opportunity to eat, like, you know, they have three forks, and, you know, they're like, "Which fork do I use for the salad?" You know, things that we don't really get the opportunity to, to see out there, so, you know, if we use one fork, we use it for the salad, for food, and everything, right? And I have two, and Hannah has two representatives. We have Albert, who is a second-year at Tech Connect, and Esmeralda, first year, so they, they want to explain what, how the program influenced them.
My name is Albert Gomez, and I am a Tech Connect alumni. This is my second year, and we are both seniors at Orocy High School. I was involved in making a difference in October. We made planters, pots, and gave them to our senior citizens in our community. In January, we began the training to become a certified tax preparer. In order to be a certified tax preparer by the IRS, you need to have an 80% or better to be certified. We all Tech Connect passed. In February, in February was when we started preparing taxes for the low incomes, and we brought back over $281,000, in which we prepared over 260 taxes in our community. We did not get paid, we did this as volunteers, and, and in high school, this has helped us do our community hours, which is required for us to graduate. And if it wasn't for Tech Connect, then we might have still been struggling to do our hours. We gave up our Saturday mornings to help our, our low-income families prepare their taxes. I was honored in helping the families filing their taxes. It was a great experience. During these times, we went to CSU Monterey Bay, and even to the aquarium, and we also went to UC Berkeley, and after that, we ended up going to Pier 39, which was a beautiful place. Throughout these trips, it had opened, this has opened my eyes that in fact, that there are more opportunities out there, and made me want to work more hard, made me want to work harder in school to qualify to go to UC. Throughout my two years of being in Tech Connect, I have learned to communicate with new people and trust the people around me. This has made me open my eyes to new people and make friends. They have also helped me prepare for the X interview, which is also another requirement for our graduation. I would highly recommend other students to join Tech Connect, because it's a really good program. I had an amazing time, and for the two years, it was, it has been very beneficial and a learning experience. Every trip we take, we took, it was educational and fun, and Miguel is a really nice instructor that cares about us very much, and treats us with respect, as we do, the same we, he has, makes, he makes us feel very welcome in the program. He makes Tech Connect a fun program to join and learn, and give back to our community. Thank you.
My name is Esmeralda Moreno. I'm very soon going to graduate this year from Orocy High School. This year has been my first being a member of Tech Connect. I really wish I had been a member for more amount of years. I only joined because some of my friends told me about it. What most caught my attention was how this program provided a hand for my high school graduation requirements, for example, creating a resume for my senior X interview and filing tax returns as part of my community service hours. Moreover, we did this, we did a lot for, we did a lot of other interesting things that were educational, like take tours of universities, learning different parts of computers, and virtual reality games. On January, we began vital training to become certified, and in order for you to be certified by the IRS, you have to score 85% on the test. You only get two chances to pass the test. All Tech Connects pass the test, which ironically, most adults can't do. As a tax preparer, I am honored and thankful for preparing taxes for low-income families for free. This also helped majorly fulfilling our 15 hours per year of community service hours requirement to graduate from high school. We gave up our Saturdays to help support green families file their taxes. During this year, we went to educational field trips. We first went to CSU Monterey Bay. On that day, we also went to the Monterey Aquarium and got to explore the city. Our UC Berkeley field trip was our next field trip after that one. Our tour guide was CSAT Illuminati. Furthermore, we had a very interesting experience at the STEAM event. I not only gained some new insight on careers, but also some prizes. Solomon Mosicchicano book about how he began from being a field worker to a doctor. I used his book to write an essay for a scholarship about a book that I've read in high school that has impacted the way I look at education. In conclusion, being part of this program has helped me be prepared for the future. I highly, highly recommend this program for future students. It is really beneficial, and will make your high school experience even better. Thank you.
If you have any questions, we have some students can answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Yeah, absolutely. At this time, I'll open up to any of my colleagues that would like to make comments, and then when we're all done making comments, I'd love to have you come join me for a photo in the middle.
Chairman, I, last year, I was able to attend the graduating ceremonies for the group, and I just want to tell you that behind every successful program is a mentor, teacher, and I can tell you that Miguel, as you can tell, I mean, you think about this, it would seem on the, at the, if you just looked at the sort of the title, these are for geeks, this is for, this is for computer people who are just going to be repairing computers, but as you can see, it is, he is interested in the entire lives of these kids, and he pours himself into their lives, and it's very obvious today, and I want to thank you, Miguel, for the work that you do, and congr... And I want to thank you, Miguel, for the work that you do. And congratulations on a great program. It's been very successful in that community. And I know it will continue, uh, under your tutelage. So, thank you so much.
Sure.
Yeah, I just, Miguel, thank you for, as Steve said, being the mentor for these, uh, young adults. Uh, I commend you for the, uh, array of, you know, the variety of, of resources that you've provided them from computer stuff to, to, you know, uh, the tax preparation and all that. So you, you guys now have this skillset that hopefully in the future, you will carry that in and into your everyday work. And of course, the community service. I hope that you, uh, got a lot out of that because to me, community service is one of the, the best things that we can do, uh, with our lives. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Supervisor Crocker?
I just, uh, it's great to be on this side. Uh, I, when I worked for PG&E, we had the opportunity to sponsor, uh, this Tech Connect program specifically several years. And, uh, we had the opportunity to, to speak before, uh, past classes. And it was, uh, it was a great program then. And it's obviously, it still continues to be a great program. And, uh, I, I just, um, encourage you, you guys, uh, continue on. And, uh, it's, it's, it's a great partnership to have a SEESET and being able to provide job skills and, and other activities. I guess maybe the chairman would suggest touring UCLA rather than Berkeley. But, uh, you know, that's, I'll leave that up to him.
Supervisor Ennis, would you like?
Yeah, what a great, uh, program, you know. You guys are the example shining light in your community. And you're way over my head with your computer skills. I mean, uh, way over my head. But, uh, and I even have somebody do my taxes. I want to do my tax myself. But no, it's, 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 it's young people like you that are the examples. Thank you.
A- a- and real quick, before we take a, a photo with you, and I'd actually like to ask all of my colleagues to come down and, and we'll all take a picture with you. But, uh, I just want to give you guys a, a little bit of advice. I, I think that this is a great program, a great opportunity, uh, that you have been able to participate in this. A- and you've had a lot of different skills and you've had a lot of different efforts invested in you. I hope that you see that this community, this county, uh, Miguel, the organization, they care about you. They want you to succeed and excel. Um, so don't ever get down on yourself. Don't ever think that you're stuck. You can always reach higher. You can always push farther. Uh, and you have folks around you that want to help you do that. So whether it's through college, whether it's through a career, uh, take advantage of the tools, the people, um, everyone, e- e- everything you have around you, all of the resources to help yourself succeed. Your success, your future is really in your own hands. And I just want to leave you with that message. So, uh, real quick, congratulations on, on being a part of this program and on all your great projects. And, uh, we're going to come now to, uh, the center here for a photo.
And by the way, this seat will be open in your district next year or in years in the future. Welcome to run for it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
That item thirty is second to county council review. We still haven't seen the bid. The bid?
Actually, see, look at the actual bid.
You actually see, look at the actual bid.
I think John would like that.
Wait a minute.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, what a great presentation and something you guys should all be very, very proud of. Uh, now that that presentation has concluded, we will move on on our agenda and take up item number three, uh, which is public comments. This time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under the public comment period? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and I will bring it back to the board. Uh, we will now move on to our consent calendar, um, items four through twenty-nine. Any member of the board wish to pull an item from the consent calendar for separate consideration? Members of the public wish to pull any item? Okay, seeing none, the chair will enter the motion this time.
Who's for approval?
I have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Man, I'm sure glad nobody pulled the assessor item because we would have the list rolling out. But, uh, other than that, congratulations.
Oh, he had, he had some new jokes he told me he was gonna have.
That was great. He's, he's already a bad enough driver, as I found out this morning. Doesn't really pay attention to the red light, green light function.
Yeah.
Pipe down. Pipe down. All right. We're gonna move on before we are distracted again by a member of the audience and take up our untimed portion of our meeting. Item number thirty, uh, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve and award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, AG Construction Corporation from Clovis, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Come on, Hernan. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. CAO, County Council, Hernan Beltran, uh, Chief Engineer with the Resource Management Agency. Uh, today I'm here to request your board to award contract for construction of Avenue Two Eighty Overlay A, a brief background on the project and update on the farm-to-market program. Uh, previously, your board authorized the advancement of five million in Measure R local program funds to expedite road maintenance and take advantage of favorable construction cost. Your board also established the county's farm-to-market program in conjunction with TCAG. Um, as you recall, farm-to-market routes are considered to be the backbone network of roads that serve the dairy, citrus, nuts, and fruit industries. Uh, the two projects selected, the two selected corridors were the Avenue Two Eighty and Avenue One Forty-four. Uh, these were selected based on five criterias, which are good movement, pavement condition, traffic safety, agriculture commodity value, and benefit cost analysis. The first project is the Avenue Two Eighty project, uh, which consists of an asphalt concrete overlay starting, starting at the Kings County, uh, Kings-Tulare County line and ending at State Route Ninety-nine. Uh, this project will replace the existing, in addition to the overlay, this project will replace the existing guardrail and barrier wall at the Box Cobra located at Mill Creek. And it will also improve the existing AC dike and down drains located west of the bridge, um, over the Union Pacific Rail, Railroad. Uh, this project is, um, on the fast track and we would like to take this project to construction in June. So next month, that is our goal. Uh, quick, uh, info on the bid results and project savings for this two, the, for the Two Eighty Overlay project. On April twentieth, eight bids were received. Um, AG Construction Corporation is the apparent lowest responsive and responsible bidder, um, with a bid of one-point-six-eight million. This project was initially estimated, uh, two-point-five million dollars. However, due to favorable bids, the new revised budget for this project is now one-point-eight-three million, uh, which comprises of one-point-six-eight of construction costs, ninety-six thousand in contingencies, and a hundred-and-twenty thousand in engineering, uh, which leaves us with the cost savings of over, just a little over six-hundred-thousand dollars, which we would, uh, will be transferring to the Avenue One Forty-four project.
I have a question regarding that. Um, were any of these-
Sure, go ahead and ask.
Thank you.
Supervisor Chucklin.
All right. Uh, were any of these local, like Tulare County, um, companies that were in the bidding process?
Uh, yeah, actually, uh, local companies lease paving. Um, I believe-
Capiche is local.
Capiche is local. They had, well, they had an oval, uh, local office here. Um, and Mac Engineering is from, uh, Porterville, Porterville area, so.
Is Emmett's local?
What's that?
Emmett's, are they local?
Emmett's in, from, they're from Clovis. And, uh, so is AG Construction. So they're, they're from the region, Fresno, Tulare region.
Do we, do we have any kind of, like, local match kind of program or anything for bids?
We do give local preference points-
Okay.
-for, in, in awarding contracts to, to favor local contractors.
So if they're, like, within the, what, the five percent?
Yeah, what, what, what is typically the scoring matrix?
Usually, we have a local preference for Measure R projects, but usually it's for consultants, uh, local, local, uh, consult, professional consultants. That's what we use. And we give them, like, when we score and we give them so many points for being, having an office in, in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, bring up and talk a little bit about the, uh, provide you guys with a quick update on the second farm-to-market project, which is the Avenue One Forty-four, uh, road rehab project. Uh, this project is, um, currently in final design and it consists of three miles of asphalt concrete overlay and two-point-five miles of road re- reconstruction. Uh, this project will start at the State Highway Ninety-nine and end near Road Seventy-two. So we got about five and a half miles of, of reconstruction. The first two and a half mile will be reconstruction and the rest would be an overlay. Um, if you can see there, the, the, uh, one thing to note for this project was that it was strategically planned to capture any remaining funds from the Avenue Two Eighty Overlay project. And in order to take, uh, advantage of the additional project, project savings from the Two Eighty and, uh, favorable bids, hopefully, we anticipate we, we get favorable bids for this project as well. Um, the, this project includes an, a additive bid alternate that will allow us to extend the asphalt concrete overlay to Road Sixty-four. So you can see there on the map, there's that red segment. Uh, we, we hope that we get that far with this money. So our intent is to use all of the, uh, of, as mass money for Measure R to, uh, to get as much as we can out there in that area. Um, you can see that the map right there shows all the, the dairies, the dairies and the agricultural activities going on in that road. So it's good use for that, for these funds. Um, the original estimate for this budget was, uh, three-point-six, uh, seven million dollars, which comprises of two-point-five for Measure R and, uh, two-point-five leveraging one-point-one-seven of federal funds. So, uh, with the additional Two Eighty savings, we, the revised budget is now four-point-two-seven-eight million. And, uh, we anticipate taking this project to construction in the fall. So we're finalized in design and we hope to get, uh, favorable bids and start to construction in the fall. Before I make the formal request and open it up for questions, I would like to thank, uh, take a moment to thank your board, the CAO, TCAG, um, for your continuous support on our road maintenance and infrastructure program. Um, with that, I would respectfully request, we'd like to respectfully request that, uh, your board approve and award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, AG Construction Corporation from Clovis, California, in the amount of one-point-six-eight million for construction of the Avenue Two Eighty Overlay project. And authorize the chairman to sign the contract after review and approval as to form by county council. And upon receipt of certified, certi- certificates of insurance, bonds, and evidence that the contractor poss- possesses a valid state contract license and allow funds for contingencies in the amount of ninety-six thousand, uh, to cover unexpected construction conditions. And authorize the director of the Resource Management Agency for designated to approve changes, change orders up to an amount of ninety-six thousand. With that, I will open it up for questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Crocker? I'm curious on the Avenue One Forty-four and the, in the estimate, does that, uh, consider, take into consideration, um, that we, that are, we have savings on the Two Eighty project, uh, from lower bids? So are, are we anticipating that we may have lower bids than, than what was originally anticipated for?
That is correct. We currently have, uh, we know of six-hundred-thousand dollars of project savings from the Two Eighty project, which we increased, uh, the budget for the, for, for the Avenue One Forty-four. Um, we hope that we get more savings. I mean, we don't anticipate spending all the money. We have ninety-six thousand dollars in contingency, which we don't plan on spending, uh, that money. We hope that we could use that money for additional work at the One Forty-four area.
I, uh, maybe, I, I don't think I was real clear. I think, um, that the initial budget was two-and-a-half million for Two Eighty and, uh, bids came in six-hundred-thousand dollars less than what we were anticipating. So are we thinking that there's a similar process for One Forty-four where, Avenue One Forty-four where we have an initial budget, but we, we think that there's a good possibility that bids will come in, uh, lower than, than what we have budgeted and hence we can do more roads?
Uh, yeah, the, the, the initial budget that we established for Two Eighty was accounted, you know, was really conservative for the asphalt because we didn't know what was going to happen with the asphalt when we first, uh, established the budget. But now we have a better idea what the asphalt is doing. And, uh, we hope that the trend remains the same. And that would create a, additional project savings. But if asphalt prices, uh, go up, then, um, then that's, that's, that's where we would, we anticipate, we actually anticipate the budget that, that I mentioned to you, the four-point-two, it actually accounts for additional, a little spa, uh, additional cost in asphalt price.
If I might, I think the way it normally works is, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, you have an engineer's estimate. Well, as the, as the bids come in, then the engineers start to adjust their estimates kind of based upon that. So they would sort of anticipate that there might be a reduction. So they're, and they're, they're, they try to be closer to what the actual bids are. And then, as was pointed out, a big part of this is what are asphalt costs. They can go up and down and they can fluctuate very, rather quickly. So that's a big problem. Uh, I, while I've got the opportunity to speak, I want to say you look very nice today, by Mr. Non.
Thank you.
Um, uh, the other thing was, I, I know it was just purely accidental that the math led to everything being District Two for these projects, but-
Did you forget about Two Eighty is in District Three? Caldwell's in District Three. I only, I only called to Two Sixty-four.
Okay, all right, Mr. Supervisor District Board. Don't try to get too much attention thrown my way.
Okay. Um, but what I was just thinking, I mean, this is just for another day. Given the fact that the state, uh, has passed this large transportation bill, uh, and I know it means we're anticipating fifteen or sixteen million dollars back, I think, to Tulare County. Is that, is that accurate for rehab?
Actually, more like four-point-five million this year. And it will increase, you know, over time. So we anticipate getting next year, next fiscal year, about four-point-five million.
So I guess I'm just looking for, a- as we, in the, in the future, as maybe, you know, you might come back and give us kind of a projection of what your plan of attack might be with these new funds and, you know, what the approach might be in going forward. Uh, I realize it's not, as always, we, we gratefully appreciate any new dollars coming in for transportation. Never is it enough. Uh, but I'm just curious what the, what, what kind of, uh, out-of-the-box thinking your, your department will come up with on how to, how to best utilize these dollars. Thank you.
Well, great for asking. Actually, we, uh, we would like to come back to your board with a road maintenance and rehabilitation plan, uh, to present to your board, which will, uh, which will include, uh, community and board input on the project selection process. So, that is our plan. Thank you.
Hey, any additional questions or comments?
District Five gets a pretty good portion of that money, so.
Yeah, I know you're hopeful, but you're gonna have to, uh, don't hold your breath, though, because it might not work out so well. Um, all right, thank you very much. Uh, any, uh, public comment related to this item? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
Who's for approval, Chairman?
I have a motion from Supervisor Worley, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That does conclude our regular session. Uh, however, I do know that we have a member of the public who joined us and, uh, wanted to speak during public comment. Senator Harris's, uh, representative is here and wanted to introduce himself, I believe. So I wanted to give him that opportunity real quick. Either microphone works too, by the way.
Well, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. Glad to be here, know, uh, some of you and look forward to getting to know the rest of you. My name's Matt Rogers and I serve as the Central Valley District Director for Senator Kamala Harris. We have a full-time, fully-staffed office in the city of Fresno downtown. And, uh, I will be reaching out to each of you individually to see how we can be of assistance to you in the future. And very much look forward to working with all of you, uh, here in Tulare County. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great, Matt.
All right, council, that does con- Alright, council, that does conclude our open session, the regularly scheduled agenda, do we have need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman, item A is being pulled off calendar, we have items B through H and I do not anticipate any announcements out of closed session.
Okay, that's great, thank you for joining us at today's meeting, we'll see you next week.